Dorothy just gave me the word.
I'd like to call this meeting to order. I'd like to ask that we all rise for the pledge and remain standing for a moment of silence. Mr. Superintendent, would you give us the pledge, Lisa?
Yes, sir. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the world before which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. At this time, I'd like to recognize our superintendent, Mrs. Trussler.
Thank you, Ms. Angel. Good evening, everyone. I'm excited to announce that tomorrow is the first day of school for our students who are reporting on A-Day, and we're excited to be bringing our students back to campuses. On Friday, B-Day students will report, and our pre-K students will begin reporting next week. This is the first normal start of a school year that we've had in a while, and we look forward to a successful year. As a reminder to our community, buses will be returning to the roads tomorrow morning. School zones are in effect. Please be alert for children waiting at bus stops, crossing streets, and entering and exiting buses. On Monday, I shared a letter with our school community regarding steps that we've taken to enhance school safety measures already in place. We are fortunate to have such strong partnerships with local law enforcement agencies who've spent a great deal of time this summer collaborating with us as we keep student and staff safety a priority. Our focus has been on steps that we can take to lessen the chances of a violent incident occurring on our campuses, as well as lessen the impact should an incident take place. We remain committed to safeguarding the students we serve. Although some measures may seem inconvenient at times, such as the requirement to show identification at buzzer entries to gain entry, or clear bag policies, the safety of our students and staff must remain our priority, and we are optimistic that our visitors will understand and recognize our need to be as vigilant as possible. We recently received state testing data and are pleased with the results. While there's still work to do, I'm extremely proud of the efforts of our entire school community. We are fortunate that our teachers, our school leaders, district staff have put in the work coming out of the pandemic that our students are, in many cases, at better standing than they were prior to the COVID pandemic. I want to recognize Dr. Robelay, Mr. Touche, and Ms. Hippolyte, who've led the work from the district along with their academic teams, worked right along with our teachers and leaders in making certain that students move forward academically. And at this time, I'd like Dr. Robelay to share just a few highlights with the board and with the public of some of our good test results.
Good afternoon, Board. So, we are excited to talk about some of the results that we got. It's important to know that we've had results for high school probably in June, but recently we got results from three through eight testing data. So, a lot of what I'm going to share with you today is state comparison data of where we did, how we performed with regards to others in the state. So, for Lafayette Parish, we were number one among largest districts in mastery for students that achieve mastery or above, and one-year change of those districts in the state. So, basically, if a kid wasn't at mastery and above, we moved more kids from mastery and mastery above than any of the large districts in the state. And when I say "large," I mean 30,000 kids or plus. We were also number one in the region. You can see here for four and five for that one-year change of moving kids to mastery level. And it's important to know what we're most excited about, probably. Roughly 90% of our schools showed growth of some sort. That's an amazing accomplishment and a true testament to the principals, teachers, educators in our district for so many of our schools to make some treads and make some headway that way. Some other things to make note of. We were recently recognized in the state as top 10 among all districts in Louisiana for, again, having more students move from below mastery to mastery or above. So proud of all of our subgroups that virtually all subgroups in every grade, three through eight, grew from prior year leap data. So, that includes students with disabilities, as well as English language learners. All grew in our schools, as well as all tested subjects experienced growth from last year to this year. ELA, math, science, social studies, all experienced growth. And then finally, all grade levels, three through eight, showed growth, as well as when we get into high school, we'll look at that as well, from last year to this year. Special recognitions for two schools out there. Myrtle Place Elementary was number one in the state of all schools for showing the most improvement in the level of kids at the mastery level and above. They moved more kids into those mastery ranges and higher than any other school in the state, and they were recognized as well. And then, of course, also recognized and special recognition goes to ECA, our Early College Academy, as they continue to be a record-breaking campus, as a number-one rated school in the entire state of Louisiana, and, again, a top-10 school in Louisiana for percentage of students at mastery level or above for 2022. Our sped department, I can't go without saying, special kudos to Ms. Ordago and our sped department, who have been working tirelessly to do what's best for our students with disabilities. So, what you see here is our improvement in rank amongst the state for moving students with disabilities into mastery-level ranges, as well as the change in those levels. So, you can see in 2019, we were ranked 36 in the total percentage and 33rd in the movement of change from below mastery to above. And now, you can see in 2022, we are number six in the state for students with disabilities overall proficiency in mastery or above, as well as 13th in the state for still-moving kids that were below that mastery level to now on it or above mastery level. So, huge kudos to students with disability and all of our teachers for supporting that work, because it has been truly a team effort. So, then the big question goes to, how do we stand right now compared to where we were before COVID, right? Academically, there was always the talk of the achievement gap and making up for this huge learning loss that would have occurred during a pandemic. And as you can see, for all grades, three through eight, we actually overall have caught up and exceeded where we were pre-COVID, at 38.5% of our kids are at mastery or above compared to where we were at 32 and 36 prior to. And then, you can see for high school, we actually caught up and are slowly back onto that improvement from where we were last year at 37.6% proficient to 40.1%. I do want to highlight, too, for high school, because Algebra I experienced the biggest growth of any Algebra I-tested subject in the state. 18.8 percentage point increase, that is one of the highest in the state by far. So, our Algebra I kids did an amazing job. Huge testament to Ms. Olson and our math department for pushing Algebra I. That's always a gatekeeper for graduation, and so that is very promising results there. And then finally, right here, you can see we continue to set trends for the most graduates in LPSS. I'm proud to say that this past year, 2022, we graduated more seniors than we've ever graduated before in Lafayette Parish in the 20 years that we've been keeping the latest state transcript records of graduates. So, we hope to continue that trend, and we're excited about that trend, but a lot of kids that were able to get across this age and get graduated. So, those are a few of the highlights from the testing data and things we're most proud of. Thank you for your time.
And, Mr. President, that concludes our comments this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I'd like to spend just one minute kind of following up on all the... I guess it was about a week or 10 days ago, I was reading the paper the other morning, and I read about what an outstanding job our school system has done. And, as you mentioned, in some areas, tops in the state, but overall, at least in the top 10%. And I think that's just, I think that's phenomenal achievement. I do want to, I just want to take a minute to point out that this is a community effort, literally. And by that, I mean, I want to thank everyone involved, not only the school system personnel, probably the most responsible, but I want to mention that our parents, the parents of our students are obviously interested and obviously working with our students. Obviously, our teachers. I want to thank our custodians. You know, children don't learn very well in a dirty environment. And while I'm on that, children don't learn very well on an empty stomach either. So, I think that our cafeteria personnel deserve a lot of praise and credit for being a part of the overall growth of our system in Lafayette Parish. I want to thank our security officers. Children don't learn if they don't feel safe, and I think they do in Lafayette Parish schools. And in closing, I want to say that one of the most important things that this body does, in my opinion, in my humble opinion, is to hire a superintendent. And I'm here to say, Ms. Trussler, I think this board did a hell of a job in the most recent hire. Thank you, and we'll get on with the business of the school board. Item 2.1 on our agenda is discussion or action concerning prospective litigation.
Mr. President, I move that the board goes into executive session to discuss the formal demand which has been made by Roxanne Guidry relative to her workers' compensation claim.
Second. Motion and a second that we retire for discussion concerning litigation. All in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carried. We'll be right back.
Mr. President, I move that we return to regular session.
No one disagrees with...
Second.
Have a second, and no one disagrees, we'll call that affirmative, and we'll move back into a regular session.
Mr. President, I move that the board accept the advice of the third-party administrator.
Second.
Motion, second by Ms. Morrison. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carried. We move on, moving along to information items. 3.1, I'd like to recognize Mr. Brusard, recognition for Dr. Donald Aguilar. Mr. Brusard?
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to introduce Mr. Charles Abert, county agent, parish chairman for our 4H Youth Development, who will do this presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brusard. Good evening, President Angel, Superintendent Trussler, members of the board, administration, and guests. Charles Abert with the LSU Ag Center, parish chair and county agent. I'd like to recognize Dr. Donald Aguilar, and I'll tell you a little bit about this award, but he has worked with the organization 4H, the Ag Center, for his 30-plus years in education. And what happened this past year, the Louisiana 4H Hall of Fame in 2008 began recognizing the Hall of Fame members for people in the communities that had contributed to the 4H program across the state. So, in 2008, they recognized 100 people, and then every year since then, they've recognized 12 per year. So, the Hall of Fame realized this first club started in 1908 in Avails Parish and Mansour, Louisiana, and that was the first corn club. And how 4H began was LSU was developing new varieties of corn, and the farmers didn't want to grow corn, so they used children, youth, to grow the new variety of corn. The kids outproduced their parents per acre, and that's how the LSU Ag Center's new crop varieties began on the farm, was through our youth, just like the children in our school today. So, just tell you a little bit about the history of 4H, but this award recognizes those individuals for their outstanding work, dedication, and support and commitment for significant contributions over their term, and in this case, it's over 30 years. Dr. Aguilar was also recognized by the Louisiana 4H Superintendent's Award for the Ag Center in 2011 as a superintendent in St. Mary, and then in 2018 was recognized for the superintendent of the Ag Center, for a state superintendent in Lafayette. But 4H has a long history of 4H's motto is "Learn by Doing," and through an educator, he's helped to incorporate through all his years as a teacher, then as an administrator, keeping us into the school system and giving us supporting for whether it's care-to-education programs or school garden programs. So, we want to thank him for all those years of supporting our program. So, with me here this evening, he is being inducted for the year 2021, realize a lot has changed. So, we've tried this a couple of times, but tonight, we will actually get to recognize him for his contribution for the year 2021. And again, I want to recognize and congratulate Dr. Aguilar for all your years of support for the program, and we're going to present this award to you. And with me is my coworker, Paul Bongerson.
It's definitely not a Katie and a colors.
No, it's not. All right. Thank you. Thank you very much. Let me point out that this is yet another example of a great decision this board made several years ago in appointing him superintendent. Thank you, Dr. Aguilar. Item 3.2 is Employee Retirement Insurance Advisory Committee vacancy announcement. We have a vacancy on the committee? Anyone want to apply? All right, item 3.3, new construction Phase 1A site package guaranteed maximum price, GMP, early release proposal for the new replacement of Lafayette High School. Mr. Brew?
Good evening, Board. President Angel, Board, Superintendent Trussler, and the community. My name is Joseph Brew, Director of New Construction. I'm happy to present this board agenda item for early release package, Phase 1A site package for guaranteed maximum price, early release proposal for the new replacement of high school at Lafayette. And that project will, this will give us an opportunity to get started on the project, just like we have on most of our other projects. We will begin non-disruptive construction activities, and this will give the contractor and the school staff an opportunity to live on that campus together and learn how to survive without being chaotic. What we're intending to do with this proposal is to do parking enhancements for the students on the corner of Marie Antoinette and Susan Street. We're going to do some stormwater improvements. We're going to do some initial campus circulation modifications to help improve the site circulation there and give the students and the parents and the drop-off and the buses improvements. That's basically what I have. We do have the funds to cover that, and I want to introduce the key players of the team. The CM@Risk contractor is Lemoine, and there's Ben. And the architect is ACSW Fluger Architects, and the representative here today is Stephen Domann. Are there any questions?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Brew, could you have Mr. Domann and Mr. Sims describe in general what stormwater improvements are going to be made as part of this? I know there's some neighbors that live around the campus that they're just interested in hearing what we're going to do to mitigate, given the fact that we're going to start putting gravel and concrete on grass?
Yes.
So, the Phase 1A project is predominantly a parking lot, a new parking lot, and with that, you know, code requires, as well as the city requires, you address the stormwater runoff that would happen on top of that surface. So, a hard surface obviously can't absorb the water, and the current area that it's going in is essentially primarily turf and grass. So, we have to adapt and provide a meaningful area for which the stormwater runoff would collect on-site. We're improving the existing drainage that's along that area, along the corner of Marie Antoinette and Susan. And we're also taking the opportunity to accommodate for the future work that's about to begin, which will be the next phase in the project, which is to start working on the building pad itself in order to make sure that we don't have flooding issues or have rainwater issues along that area. We're capturing the water that's going to be adjacent to the new building, and we're diverting it to this new retention area so that we can address that before it becomes an issue later on in the project. So, we're taking the opportunity to address that now before we really get started with above-ground work on the building itself.
Where on campus is the retention area going to be?
So, it is along Marie Antoinette as it approaches Susan, essentially where the sidewalk is along the side of the baseball fields now.
So, like the batting cages?
The batting cages, pitching area.
All right. Thank you so much for those answers.
Are there any other questions?
Mr. Brew, I'm looking at the photo from possible building. Did we ever decide where on that land, where are we going to utilize on this baseball, softball field, or the football field, or approximately where are we going to build this?
Sure. The footprint of the building is going to be located centrally in the property, pretty much the only green space that's available, because we're going to construct school concurrently with the educational process, and this is the logical place to do it. Slight demolition is going to be required, but we're getting started on that as soon as possible. As far as the baseball and softball field, we're working on a collaborative effort to utilize parks and recreations where possible to enhance a couple of fields, baseball field and a softball field, for us to have our game activities there and practice. And it would take the place of those that are being disrupted on the campus that we're using for constructing.
Thank you very much. I'm sorry, Ms. Laboue?
I know it mentions in here the Health Academy relocation or demolition alternates. Is that included, or is that just if the project allows?
So, we priced it both ways. We priced it as though it's included, and we also priced it to see if we can have resources in-house that we can utilize to give us a better value. So, that gives an opportunity to get the most feasible approach.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Item 3.4 is guaranteed maximum price amendment for the new Truman Early Learning Center.
Good evening, members of the board. Kyle Bordelon, Director of Planning and Facilities. We've been working with the architect, Grace Abert, on the Truman Early Learning Center project, along with Lemoine Company, who is the construction manager at risk. In a previous board meeting, we've approved Guaranteed Maximum Price Number One, which was for site work, foundation work, structural steel, and roofing. What's presented in the information item tonight is the Guaranteed Max Number Two, the final guaranteed max for the remainder of the building, everything else that's related to the building. And that price has been reviewed by the architects and recommended to us for approval, and that's why we have it in the information item tonight. If there's any questions, I'll take those.
Yes, sir. Mr. Brusard?
Just one question out of curiosity. I know we purchased a site, there's property next to it that we're using to stage material. What is the one next to it? Are we doing some work on the property that's not fenced in? I see the heavy equipment moving dirt, moving dirt around on the property that's not fenced in. Are we doing anything with that or that's private?
I believe that's the private property of Ash Industries. I know Lemoine Company has worked an agreement with Ash Industries to create a lay-down yard and a place to park their employees during construction, which is separate from the site that we purchased. So, but that's, that's something that Lemoine worked out with the owners of Ash Industries.
But so, so the property that's not fenced in has then to do with the construction or what we've, or what we're doing?
Ben?
That's, that's correct. It, it doesn't have anything to do with the actual construction of the project, really just for lay-down of property so it didn't have to be in the footprint of the property where we're actually building the, the new building. So we have a lease agreement that we have signed with that ownership of the property. And they're allowing us to use that property also for storage of onsite dirt. And then we're gonna take that dirt and put it back on the site. It's just there for storage temporarily.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Centeni, you have a question? Yes, sir, you have a question?
In the addendum, did you had all these cost-based, cost-saving options? Is that being discussed tonight or with the fences?
No, it's not being discussed tonight, but it's something that we're discussing with the superintendent and staff as we move forward.
Does it get a participation on it there?
No, sir. Don't, don't leave, Mr. Bordelone, I think you're next too.
Yes, sir, not going anywhere.
If there's no other questions, we'll move on to the next item, which is monthly facilities update.
Members of the Board, in your board packet is the monthly construction update. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer those at this time.
Yes, sir.
I can say the one thing I'm very pleased about, they, they moving pretty quick on that fence at El Leo Judis. I, I don't know if they're not almost finished. Is that a six-foot or eight-foot fence?
Six-foot.
Six, okay. Yeah, they finished today? Cause I, not plugging a restaurant or nothing, but I was eating lunch at Cajun's across the street and I could see them working and I could see the backside that they still, they still had some work to do. So they finished today, we're very, very pleased with that because that'll just enhance the safety of the school. Thank you all so much for that.
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Laboue?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to commend you on getting Broussard's car rider line finished, lane finished before school started. So congratulations, that's amazing. I'm very thankful, as well as the awnings for the ROTC building at Como. So appreciate all you do, thank you.
Ms. Morrison?
Yes, I just wanted to check on the updates for Dussault, the overhangs, how's that going? I know it went out for bid and where are we with that?
Contractor is, well tomorrow's the start of school. I, I don't have an exact status on where he got, but I know he was trying to get all the posts installed at all four schools, all four sites before school started. I'm not sure if he's accomplished that or not, but now that school has started, he's gonna shift his operations to either late, late evenings, late afternoons or weekends so he can avoid the students.
So once they get started, about how long does it take for completion? About?
I don't recall exactly how much time we have in the contract. But I, I can find that answer out and, and try to get back with you pretty quickly.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
And if I could, I'll, I'll just say it during the construction part. The, the completion of the athletic facility at Acadiana, the Dave Cavalier Junior Athletic Facility is very, very near completion. I want to thank Pochet and Pruitt, I want to thank Felipe personally for, for what he has done for us and very, very pleased. There'll be a ribbon cutting on September 9th at 5:00 PM. Very informal, ten, fifteen minutes. I mean, the coach will have to break away from the team. We don't do formal ribbon cuttings or dedications at Acadiana anymore because the last three we've done, we've lost the game. So we don't, we don't, we don't, we lost to Lafayette High when we named the stadium after Bill Dodson. We lost to Como and Matt McCullough when we named the baseball field after his daddy. We named the field after Ted Davidson. We lost to Doug Dodson and Como. So this is an unofficial ribbon cutting. So it's at 5:00 PM, we'd like to invite the public, if you want to come by. We have a home game that night at seven, we play sulfur. It's, it's gonna be a, an exciting time. So September 9th, 5:00 PM, y'all come on by, we're gonna be tailgating and having a really good time and cooking. And so we can show off this brand-new facility, thank you.
Mr. Centeni?
This is gonna be my monthly thing until December. Are we looking good at Woodvale?
Yes, sir.
Alright, so I saw a whole bunch of fifth graders at LJ Alamo walking to portable buildings yesterday, being told we're moving back in January, so thank you.
Contractor says he's still on schedule for, for that date.
Alright.
Mr. Chesso, Dr. Chesso?
Hey Kyle, quick question. What's the timeline for the JW Falk playground equipment? How long will it take us to install it?
I am not, I, I'm not on that project, someone else is, but I can try and get an answer for you.
I appreciate it.
Mr. Flair could probably give us some details?
It should be in on the 14th. Do you know how long it would take to install? Two days? That's what I'm talking about. Alright, y'all wanna come do some work at my house? Two days? Alright, thank you.
Yes, sir, Mr. Broussard?
I had a question on, on the playground equipment at Falk. Was that part of the, the, us paying some of the, some of the money raised for that? Or we are funding the whole thing? Someone asked me a question some time ago about that. And they raised some money for that. Is, is that part of the program that we've got or are we funding the whole thing? You, you, anyone?
I don't believe, I don't believe that was a matching funds, capital improvements.
Capital improvement?
Yeah, the playground equipment had gotten old and outdated. We, we tore it out and we ordered this. Somebody help me. It was a long time ago, a long time ago. And that's just the price of doing business right now. We couldn't get it in and it's finally in.
But somebody just asked me a question some time ago, there was matching funds. I don't know, I, so I told them and, and thank you for bringing that up so they, hope they're listening. Or I'd gotten get in contact with them, it'd be in soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bordelone. And we'll move along to the consent agenda. I'll read them all if you want any of them pulled, please so indicate. Item 4.1, Discussion Concerning the Intergovernmental Agreement with Lafayette Consolidated Government Concerning the Use of Neyland Park for Lafayette High School Athletics. 4.2, Discussion or Action Concerning the 2022-2023 Pupil Progression Plan. 4.3, Employee Services, Discussion or Action Concerning a New Employee Discipline Hearing Officer List. 3.4, Discussion Concerning Budget Revision to the Self-Funded Construction Fund for Acadiana High Lighting Replacement Project. 4.5, Facility Discussion or Action Concerning Permission to Advertise, Bid and Award Acadiana High Lighting Replacement Project. 4.6, Discussion and/or Action Concerning Budget Revision 2019A Construction Fund for Southside High Restrooms and Vending Building. 4.7, Discussion or Action Concerning Permission to Advertise, Bid and Award Southside High School Restrooms and Vending Building. 4.8, Discussion or Action Concerning Budget Revision to Capital Improvement Fund for Southside High Athletic Storage Building. 4.9, Discussion and/or Action Concerning Budget to Actual for July 2022. 4.10, Discussion or Action Concerning Administrative Guidelines for Board Meeting Agenda Action Items. 4.11, Discussion or Action Concerning the Sale and Removal of the Residential Home Located at 2831 South Fieldsman Road, Adjacent to Ridge Elementary. 4.12, Discussion Concerning Proposed Recommendations and Award for Pre-Positioned Emergency Remediation Services for the Lafayette Parish School Board. 4.13, Discussion or Action Concerning Revision to Policy BE, School Board Ethics, EDD, School Bus Scheduling and Routing, GAA, Equal Employment Opportunity and Non-Discrimination, JAA, Equal Education Opportunities, JBD, Student Absences and Excuses, JCDAF, Bullying and Hazing, JCDB, Student Dress Code, JD, Discipline, JDE, Expulsion, JGC, Student Health Services, JGCD, Administration of Medication and Sunscreen, and JM, Student Voter Registration, JQA, Expecting and Parent Students. 4.14 Warehouse, Discussion and/or Action Concerning the Online Auction of Surplus Equipment and Supplies. 4.15, Discussion or Action Concerning the Minutes of July 13th, August 3rd, 2022?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we approve all items not pulled.
We have a motion in the second that we approve all items not pulled. We will entertain comments concerning any items not pulled. Uh, this is, yes, you're welcome to come, but this is not a question-answer session, but a comment session.
Wayne Calvin, I, I think before you proceed with 410, you ought to think twice about it. There's, there's a lot of reservations I think you ought to put on that. You've given up a lot of responsibility, board members, to saying, dumping this responsibility on your purchasing and your superintendent. And when they come up with a project to say, hey, here's a budget. Well, but how do they know what the budget is before they get estimates? Before they get criteria? Before you know what's in the description and all that? And they want to prove it and then they're gonna work out the details later? You've given up all that responsibility because the way it reads is once you give them that budget, they're free to do whatever they want with it between the superintendent as long as it doesn't exceed that amount. So you've given up that total responsibility. This is what we elect you to do, is to overlook that. Now I know a lot of times it's overwhelming because we're talking about all these schools and facilities all over the parish. So what I expect you to do, and I think would be very helpful, and I've, I've asked the library to do this and it's been very helpful. Each one of the schools we have in, in the system here, come up with a history, a reference book. The age of the school, the size of the school, who, when it was built, how many students we served? Did we add any wings? Have we done any replacements, any work on that school? Such that all that is, is there and it's available for, not only for you, but when your replacement comes in. Because when your replacement comes in, they don't know what happened two years ago. You know, a lot of you have been on here several years and kind of remember a few years back, but there's a constant turnover. Plus, you have all that information. If you put a bigger investment in the heating and cooling, you know it, okay, it was done in 2019. Why are we doing it in 2022 if we did it three years ago? You know, and we built this roof. Did we build it out of asbestos or did we build it out of a steel-metal thing? If you have all that history and you have it in a reference thing such that you're not only familiar with the schools in your district, but you're familiar with the schools that are all across the area. And then when we come up with a big project like this one for Truman over Lafayette High on North Side that we did earlier with the roofs, you know, we say, okay, we're replacing this asbestos roof with a metal roof because that thing is leaking and that, and that asbestos roof was replaced on there eight, 10 years ago. You've got an idea of when it was done and to say, okay, or if it was a poor design. Not only that, but you should list the architect of these schools and the major contractor of these schools such that you've got a history. Because if you start seeing a problem that this architect has designed these roofs such that they leak or these walls such that they leak, hey, we've got a problem here. And we've got a history and you can all tie it back in and it takes some of the responsibility off the purchasing manager. Because if he retired, leaves or goes to somewhere else, then you've lost all that history, you know? And you, you just, it's too hard for you to remember everything that goes on the parish. You're trying to deal with many of the education issues, but a lot of these bucks, look, we're spending what, 30 million on Truman? You know, we're spending what, gobs on, on Lafayette High School? Not to say that they shouldn't be done, but where's the history for this thing? Just like we're building a new Prairie Elementary, you know? Okay, what's, what's going in there? How are we making it better? And are we designing the playground equipment such that maybe we could fence it off and it could be designed for public use? Other than like we have here at Truman where it's in the middle and now, you know, you'd have to access the school to get to the playground equipment. But if you had it fenced off some kind of way, you know, such that you could have joint use of it, such these three months we just had off of school, kids could use that playground equipment. We're just talking about replacing playgrounds at, at Falk. You know, those kind of things, look ahead and have these things. But if you have a reference menu that you could use and design all of that, you, you would have a better idea. And then when you come up with that project, you'd have it right there. And then when the cost estimates come in or change orders come in, you could reference that and just say, okay, here's a change order, you know? And just like this one at Truman, I asked the 30,000, it was a 30,000, what, change order? We're gonna do the fence or the 42,000, we're gonna, we're gonna leave it up to those two people, you know? Maybe you think, hey, you know, maybe you got an idea. Maybe we ought to not put a board fence because a hurricane comes in a big wide open field, it's gonna slap down a board fence, I don't care how new it is, you know? If you hit the right, the wrong ringtone.
Wrap it up.
But you get the point. I think you're relinquishing too much control and you've got to revisit this thing and just say, hey, I think you, you, you really want to keep better tabs. Maybe put a limit on there, like, okay, up to 50,000. And after that, you know, it's gotta come back.
Thank you. Any other, any other comments? Yes, sir?
Good evening. I'm gonna be short because I'm a preacher, so I do know how to do.
Well, I owe you at least as much as we gave him.
I do stuff, I know I do stuff decent in order. My pastor taught me how to do stuff decent in order. My name is Minister Kerry Williams. I am the minister of the Harvest Center Church here in Lafayette under the leadership of Pastor Daniel Kelly and Serona Kelly. Question, we opened in September a learning center here in Lafayette on the throughway. I don't know who's the board president, the school board member for that, that area, maybe? So you know about the, about our, the learning center that we're opening up in September on that end. So what, what we're trying to do, instead of for the Truman's officers, we could send them to our, to our facility and we will teach them computers and all kinds of stuff in, 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 in our area. And that's, that's what, that's what the Harvest, the learning center is for our children is instead of them, putting them in jail, instead of them for, when they're out of school, they come over to our learning center. But we cannot do this by ourselves. We do need help from the board and we're asking, I'll get with the, the member that represents that area. We do need help for the learning center and that's all I ask so we, so we can keep our children in, in that area. Because the learning center is gonna be a very, very important area for us to open, but it takes money. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir. If there's no other public comment, Mr. Broussard?
I just need to, I don't know, ask a question or make a comment. I know with this, the, the leadership and, and the board's the turnover, but it's, it's, he sparked my curiosity as far as the history of the schools and all the buildings that we have. And I'm, and I'm certain somewhere in the archive that we, we keep adequate records as to what the school was built with, who built the school and when and where. But I'm asking the question with the leadership that's sitting behind me or in front of me. Do we, do, do anyone know for certain that, that's as part of our policy or Mr., Mr.? part of our policy? Or Mr. Bullon can even answer the question, you know, just say yes or no, it's fine, you don't want to have to elaborate on. The gentleman raised a valid point as to the history and what we've done to, and if the HVAC go out a couple of years from now, and you fortunately retire, and somebody else take your place, and we know that we spent millions of dollars to replace it, and it's still calling the warrant.
I'll try to be as brief as possible. In the last 25 years, I've collected a lot of information. All that information is pretty much stored electronically. We have a file, electronic file system that's stored in the cloud, that is shared amongst everyone in my office. And if I was to not show up tomorrow, all of that information is there, and it's pretty well organized that it's available. So, and we keep track of project records electronically, the contractors, the payments, who the architects were, who the subcontractors were. So we've got a lot of information stored, and it's readily available.
I knew you would have, but just to satisfy the audience curiosity, we do keep adequate records as to what we purchase and who we purchased it from and who did the building. Thank you.
Mr. Boo?
Mr. President, just out of curiosity, I know that transportation actually doesn't handle the maintenance. Is it, does your department handle maintenance of the buses, or is that a separate department?
It's the maintenance department.
Okay. And if somebody needed or had questions with maintenance or bus issues, who do they contact? I'm just curious. Is that, I referred somebody to transportation, I was told, no, that's...
They can contact either myself or Glenn Oliver, the maintenance supervisor.
Great. Thank you so much.
Okay, if there's no other questions or comments, we'll vote on the motion to adopt all the items not pulled. Which is all of them. Madam President, Madam Secretary, we call for the vote.
Mr. President, while we're waiting on the vote, I did have a question. If somebody could answer, what was, what is the, what is pre-positioned emergency remediation services? If somebody could answer that? Item 4.12.
Ms. Early?
You could yell it out, Ms. Early, and I can just repeat it if you want.
Those services would cover any type of, if we have a hurricane, they'd be boots on the ground immediately. If we have a fire, they'd handle those. So any type of an emergency service, we have them in place. We are priority customer. And something we don't have now, which has been real tough on our custodians and all our maintenance department, because they're actually the ones that are going out there to do that, and guarantee can give us the detail, the size of tree trunks, the dirt that was used, which we need to be able to recover our claims under FEMA.
Motion carried. That was the last item on the agenda. This meeting is adjourned.
Mrs. Centeni, would you lead us in the pledge? First of all, I want to remind everyone, everyone should be wearing a mask and practicing social distance. Thank you very much. Okay, item 1.3, opening comments. Superintendent Chox-Clare?
Thank you, President Morrison. Today, our teaching and support staff reported to campuses for the first day of district-wide in-service to prepare for the students' first days of school beginning August 12. We are excited to welcome everyone back and look forward to the many wonderful things they will accomplish again this year. As a reminder, students will start on an AB schedule for the first two days of school only. Please check out the new LPSS website for grade level reporting details. We recently received the latest data from the Louisiana Department of Education, and LPSS saw notable growth in many areas as measured by Louisiana's accountability system. Academically, high school ELA scores increased to a five-year-high based on tests taken this past year. In two other critical measures of the accounting system, we saw an entire letter grade increase from a B to an A in cohort graduation rate and strength of diploma. Based on data from the 2019-2020 school year, our graduation, our cohort graduation index increased from 85.1B to 94.1A. This index reflects the number of seniors that graduated on time with the allotted four-year period. This accounts for 20% of the high school performance score. Based on the outcomes of our graduates from the 2019-2020 school year, our strength of diploma index increased from 89.8B to 101.1A. Strength of diploma is defined as the number of students completing advanced coursework, including college-level classes and/or industry-based credentials. This accounts for 25% of the high school performance score. Beginning this fall, qualifying LPSS high school seniors attending David Thibodeau Steel Magnet Academy will have the opportunity to earn college engineering credits as part of a pilot dual enrollment program in the UL College of Engineering. We want to thank Pew Family Foundation Chair Nick Pew, David Thibodeau Steel Magnet Academy Instructor Todd Hanson, and UL Lafayette College of Engineering Associate Dean Dr. Hunter for partnering to make this project possible for our students. As part of the partnership with the Lafayette Ready Start Network, LPSS has secured funding for a new program that will make available more than 200 seats in 11 early learning childhood centers for children from birth to age three. These no-cost seats are now available on a first-come, first-served basis to families who apply and meet the requirements. Please visit our website for more application details or call 337-521-7134. And in closing, each year, SlimCo members have an opportunity to, SlimCo members have an opportunity to offer a $2,000 scholarship to some of our students to attend a public university or community college. This year, three recipients from Lafayette Parish were awarded the scholarships, and they are Logan Landry from Southside High School, Diamond Ladette from Acadiana High School, and Erin Robinson, also from Acadiana High School. Thank you, SlimCo, for supporting our students, and congratulations to these well-deserving recipients. This concludes my opening statements. Ms. Morrison?
Thank you, Superintendent Chox-Clare. Okay, before we move forward, I'd like everyone to know that Ms. Laboo is not here because she's ill, and Ms. Mason is out of town. All right, so our next item, we're going to go into litigation. I'm going to read all three items, and then I would ask for a motion to go into litigation. Item 2.1, discussion and/or action concerning prospective litigation. 2.2, discussion and/or action concerning prospective litigation. And 2.3, discussion and/or action concerning prospective litigation. I'll ask for a motion.
Madam President, I move that the board go into executive session to discuss the formal written demand which has been made by Madonna Mata relative to her workers' compensation claim, and to discuss formal written demand which has been made by Sarah Noel relative to her workers' compensation claim, and to discuss the formal written demand which has been made by Monica Crooks relative to her workers' compensation claim.
Second?
Okay, I have a motion by Mrs. Centeni and a second by Mr. Lachale. All in favor? We'll go into executive session at this time.
Check, check, check. Hold on, this? Yep. Check, check, one, two. Check, check. Check, one, two. Check, check, check.
Madam President, I move that we return to regular session.
Okay, I have a motion by Mrs. Centeni and a second by Mr. Angel to go back into regular session. Any public comments? Any board comment? I'll call for the vote.
Six, four, and then against.
Motion passed.
Madam President, I move that the board grant the request of the third-party administrator relative to the workers' compensation claim demands made by Madonna Mata, Sarah Noel, and Monica Crooks.
Second?
A motion by Mr. Centeni and a second by Mr. Lachale. Any comments from the public? Any comments from the board? I'll call for the vote.